At this point, is it just an overview of what we're hoping to accomplish? Solicited ideas, comments. It's a collaborative process, obviously, that's why you're all here. Items brought forward have been discussed at one time or another. Planning Commission, everybody or both. So at this point, Mr. Chair, if you'd like to, I'll make an order.
Meeting to order.
Mr. Mayor, if you'd like to call a special session.
I'd like to call a special session.
Very good.
For the allegiance.
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Here, here he'll be, Father, and be with the seedlings, and we make decisions for the city and the good and the welfare of the community. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
I see this as approval of agenda, this is approved agenda for today, May tenth, twenty twenty-one, Planning Commission meeting, so this will be, Mr. Chair, you would have to do the usual business.
Looking for a motion.
I'd like a motion to approve the agenda.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. Item D, this is citizen comments. At which point you can open hand, close it if you wish, at your desire.
No citizens' comments, no pitchforks or tomatoes.
You alert.
This is item E, approval of the minutes. This is approved of the regular meeting minutes for April twelfth, twenty twenty-one. Quick review, there was the conditional use for the vote in RV storage in county, detached garage square footage, devastates preliminary plat, and devastates final replat. Once again, Mr. Chair, at your discretion.
Looking for a motion?
I'll make a motion, we approve the minutes.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Very good. So, as mentioned, there'll be no border zoning appeals, we're gonna try to run through this so we can get to the items on each. No old business, new business, so we're gonna go ahead and start off the, this meeting with sign regulations. Everyone's favorite topic. Quick review, sign regulations, the city of Goddard help regulate the types and numbers of signs existing in the city limits. These regulations can be changed with the approval of the Planning Commission of the governing body. And on March twenty-first, twenty sixteen, the governing body approved changing the sign regulations to include a stipulation that mandates that all signs be brought up to the code by December thirty-first of twenty twenty-one. That was ordinance seven eighty-three. The new code does not classify pole signs, and it would require all commercial signs be converted to monument signs by the end of the twenty twenty-one year. Pole signs are prohibited for all existing and future signs by December thirty-first, twenty twenty-one, according to the code, current code. Some businesses have raised concerns about needing to convert to monument signs and the prohibition of pole signs in the future. The city offered to pay a portion of the conversion process with the income from the one percent sales tax, that was in the past, but ultimately not accepted. The question arises, should all new signs be required to be monument signs? And should all existing pole signs have an amortization period to convert to monument signs similar to one that is in effect now? At which point, financially none, approved as the form, this is receive and file, everything will be receive and file, and it's an open conversation. Mr. Chair, if you'd like to open it up, and everyone can receive, we can receive feedback at this point.
I think the biggest question was the, the date, twenty twenty-one, and is that realistic for what we're trying to do? Or do we need to have people step up and, and follow what the ordinance is now?
Everybody talked at once.
I'm not sure it's feasible for a lot of the businesses to be able to afford to change out their pole signs. That's a major expense.
I think it is too, but what do you do? How, how do you get to monument signs if, if that's the ultimate goal? How do you get there?
I think the simplest thing to do is to say that you grandfather the ones that aren't right now. And going forward, if we have new developments, most of the development in the city right now is in the galeria. And they mandate within their own development that you have to have a monument sign. Now, I know there are other certain areas. I think one of the biggest concerns is just north of Kellogg, right in front of the Starbarn, where all of the, the metal buildings are. And how do you fix that? I don't think you should force businesses by the end of this year to put in monuments. That's, that's way too expensive, and that's a cost that they don't wanna incur, and they really shouldn't have to.
Well, there are a lot of businesses though that have changed hands, and so they had no concept or idea of what the past has been. And we put this ordinance in place, or rules in place ten years ago, and they had time to prepare for this. And they just blew it off, and now they wanna come and say, and foul. Well, they knew ten years ago that this was coming, and that they needed to save up for these monuments. And as I say, we give them five years, you say, you've got five years to get your signs corrected, otherwise we're taking them down. Because you already had ten years to prepare.
That, that meets end of this year. If, if the way the ordinance is written now, they need to come down by the end of this year.
Well, I mean, if we're trying, if we're trying to appease them, just have it in writing, period. And if we have to publish it in the paper, publish it in the paper, saying, okay, this is what's gonna happen. And out there for all the world to see.
And, uh, Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Mayor, and, and board members, um, one thing that I think if, whatever's kind of the consensus this evening for us to proceed, we can, we'll need to change the ordinance one way or the other. Unless you tell them to take it down, and I kinda get the feeling that the consensus is, is that we've kinda walked up to the eleventh hour, and there's been a lot of communication, perhaps miscommunication, some of which is derived from, um, transient members or occupants of City Hall. Uh, including, uh, to the point of not communicating the fact that the city was willing to, uh, try and work with the businesses, with the one percent sales tax that we collect, and that they are direct contributors to. So one thing that we could do is give them an additional five years, and then in five years, we can then reassess whether or not the city will be in the financial condition to look at offering a similar type program that, uh, Matt and I had crafted to make it essentially a relatively revenue-neutral burden on the business owners. Um, and, and that way, we can, even in five years, still reassess it and decide if that's something that, that you were interested in personally. Because ultimately, it's, do we want pole signs, or do we not want pole signs? And when we did the Community Vision Plan in twenty fourteen, it was a resounding, we don't want pole signs, and we don't want a ten, ten-building facade. And we had even gone so far as to look at neighborhood revitalization districts, and reinvestment in a TIF-like manner of the property taxes within there, to identify facades with property owners, to how we might be able to adjust that. Uh, but as soon as we realized that they were not receptive to even the city paying for a portion or the entirety of the pole signs, we stopped our work on, on looking at doing that, because if they're not gonna take the low-hanging fruit, why would they wanna look at investing in the property and not having an additional tax burden to improve the facades, to clean it up? Almost like you're pinning up, kinda like the old Montana, um, the, uh, Monta, Ted's Montana, the, the, where they had the, that kind of facade onto a Morton building that made it look like it was kind of an early nineteen hundreds building. We were looking at things like that, that we might be able to do for the businesses along Kellogg, to kinda try and clean that up. But, again, when we couldn't even get the receptiveness for the pole barns, we just dropped, or for the pole signs, we just dropped all of that. So, um, I think if we were to look at giving them an additional window, because again, we have to modify the ordinance or tell them to take it down, and I think from the comments that we've heard, again, it's too, too short of a turnaround, there's been some mixed messaging. Um, we give them an additional five years, we can reassess, and we may even at that time be in a little different, uh, financial condition to, uh, to offer some assistance to, again, make that as palatable as possible in all the parties.
I guess, I guess the thing that burns my butt the most is how many of these businesses are actually owned by the same people as owned them ten years ago? So, most of those businesses have sold, and new owners have taken over, and it was deceptive on those people that sold those businesses not to tell them that this ordinance thing is coming, and you've got a sign to come and do. So they ought to be mad at the people that sold them the business.
But that's not the case.
They want, but they should be, instead of being mad at us for enforcing something that the people that sold them that business failed to tell them at the time of sale.
Well, it kinda comes down to ignorance and the law. Yeah. Another issue is the height of signs, and a monument sign that is high enough to be seen off of Kellogg has to be a major undertaking. And a pole sign high enough to be seen off of Kellogg is not near as big a deal. And I think that's one of the arguments we're gonna get. Height for a monument, for any sign is?
Ten feet in the commercial district.
Well, when you, when you get a flyover, they aren't gonna see those pole signs anyway. That flyover's gonna be over the height of those pole signs.
They gotta be high enough, I think the, the rational thinking for monument signs, stoned-up signs, is because it looks better for our neighbors, right? That's, that's the angle we're passing through. And typically, with those massive signs, it's, it's one big sign with multiple signs within, within the monument, right? And I think, uh, to kinda feed off of what Brian said, if we were to give another window, I think we would still get a lot of gripe from some of the business owners if we said, well, we're, we're still planning on doing the same thing, but it's gonna be in another five years from now. If we plan on investing, and if this is something that we want to do, well, then we need to plan five years from now and actually just paying for the signs, and getting it done that way. But if we plan five years from now, saying, well, maybe if, we might wanna pay half, or we might wanna pay for the whole thing, but we don't know. Well, we're leaving our businesses up in the air. Now, that's not, if we're gonna mandate it, then we should give them the guarantee on what we plan on doing. Five years from now, we're gonna place in a budget, however we wanna do that, to pay for the thing. And then we can have a process, and this is what it's gonna look like.
If you want it to be nicer, then you have to pay the difference.
Or if you want a bigger size, because you want a bigger sign, however we wanna structure that deal, and then we can start picking locations, say, five years from now, because we have the money, we're gonna start going from location to location and start doing this. But if all of a sudden, we just slap it on people, I don't think they're gonna like that.
You're not all of a sudden slapping on it, they got five years to think about it.
I mean, and my issue is, I mean, Kellogg Drive looks like crap too. So here we are asking them to spend a lot of money on a sign to put out in front of a crappy street. I mean, you know, there, there's no, there, there's no shrubs, there's no, there's no greenery whatsoever, and, and it just looks like crap. So I'd be, that's my biggest beef there, is that, you know, parking lots look like crap, weeds are going through everywhere, and here we are asking them to put in a bigger sign. I think if we're gonna ask for a sign, we need to put some stipulations on, on what the rest of it looks like as well.
Our unwelcome to Goddard signs falling apart.
Yeah.
Yeah. And further to what you're saying, what are we gonna do with the ten buildings?
Right.
Yeah.
You know, if you're gonna put up an eighty thousand dollar sign in front of a ten building, what's that say?
So, I, I think there's a lot of, there's a bigger focus than just the sign, um, in my opinion. I don't know what we're trying to, to improve with having.
We counted over fifty-eight.
Fifty-eight signs.
And, and just so that you know, the visual clutter along Kellogg is, it's loud.
Oh, yeah, but.
And, and so.
It's limited too, I mean, you don't have a lot of options.
Right. And, and part of the, at least from staff perspective, and in previous discussions, I think it was, how do you eat the elephant? A bite at, a bite at a time. And we knew that when this was discussed back, you know, seven, ten years ago, that signs would be the low-hanging fruit. And then we could begin to work the, the facades, and, and, and also get some, get some buy-in from, from the property owners. But at the end of the day, at the staff level, we need to know what, what you as the community folks want, so that we're not crafting all of these nice programs and policies that are done on arrival or, or miscommunicated. And folks telling us they don't want free, free money for the one cent that they're collecting in their businesses, which is what they told us. So, um, you know, we, we just wanna make sure that, that we have very finite resources, you have finite time, and when you come in and you give your time once a month, that it, it's valuable, and it's worth time, and you feel like you're giving back to the community. So we wanna make sure that, that everyone here feels like you're moving the ball down the field toward the end zone and not going backwards. And I know with the sign issue, we've certainly been losing yardage.
But every, every time, every time you make, you kick the ball down the road, you've got another business coming in, wanting exemption from their signs. How many exemptions have you already granted? Because they're saying, well, look at that sign over there, they've got one, why can't we have one?
Well, just, just like the new outdoor, uh, machinery place, they came in and they wanted five signs on the front of their building, and we gave it to them, but we probably shouldn't have. They're, they're past the, is it ten percent? I'm hell with numbers tonight.
No, it's, it's a requirement, three, it's, um, one sign, one wall sign per, from it basically, touching a street, so they are only allowed one.
Yeah.
Um, wall sign that they wanted, um, I think three, and so, four, I can't remember exactly how many, but that's.
Well, and.
It's allowed under the variance of.
But every, every time you allow an exemption, that just holds your feet to the fire to the next guy. Because they just pointed him, and you gave it to him, why can't I have it?
Yeah, wait till she's wrong, son.
It's a combination.
I don't know. There's no easy answer, and, and you're in a difficult place, I know. Because they, they posture and say, well, if we can't get it, we're not coming. And, and that's, I know, because we get it, and so I know you get it.
If we're looking at fifty-eight pole signs, replacing those, has anybody done the math on what that's gonna cost?
What we would end up doing is very, exactly what was discussed previously, which is to, to have a, a base and a core with a message sign, and then stacks of.
Fifty-eight would turn into what, ten?
I, I'd have to go back and look, because again, once, once I realized that we had wasted a lot of time and effort, we, we stopped.
And to your point, I would feel bad when Kellogg Drive is very difficult to drive on. What, what, what message is that sending to our businesses? Is that we're not willing to invest in our, which we do, we do plan on doing that, you know? But we have to have a plan, and we have a plan in place to fix that road, and it's gonna cost a lot of money to do so.
Uh, would, would you guys write down the following numbers? This'll kinda help set the tone. Seven point five. Now, subtract three from that. Okay, now, add that up. So you're at?
Four and a half.
Four and a half. subtract another three.
One point five and a half.
Okay, three million dollars, one lift station. If it's GO, it goes against our debt limit. If it's not, it's not. Seven point five is our current debt limit. How much we can borrow? Three million is roughly a hundred to a hundred and fifty homes. So we've got one point five roughly, again, it's, it's voodoo math, because it's not exact. But you're looking at roughly three million dollars for a new subdivision. If they need a lift station, that's another three. So then you're looking with five and a half. Now, we're in the process right now of assessing, because we're gonna have stuff rolling off from St. Andrews and the last part of Spring Hill, but we've just started that analysis. So, that's the other thing that we're trying to keep in mind here too, is how much wiggle room do we have? Because when we were talking about incentives and stuff like that earlier, you might have noticed some hostility, and that was part of what we as staff were trying to say. It's, it's, it's simple arithmetic, but it was being miscommunicated that we had, you know, we need to max the credit card out, and if we max the credit card out, then the next roughly fifteen to twenty years of city council and planning commissions really have no reason to get together. Because you can't even add a new subdivision. So, it, it, it's all about being diligent and understanding where we jump and when we jump. And again, it's, you know, my favorite saying is, is I plan, God laughs. But we still have to have a plan, so we keep moving in that right direction. So, uh, you know, we have a lot of growth, which is good, but there's a lag factor as to when those taxes start hitting, and those temp notes, which are against our limit, start being converted into permanent financing, which again's twenty years. So you're looking at roughly twenty-four years of, of debt, and so it's, you gotta, it's, it's not as simple as saying, well, let's, let's, let's give it, let's build away. That's why we were saying when we start talking about incentives, and we start trying to be development-friendly, it's what we've said before, we wanna be special, not unspecial. And so when we talk about what we can do and how we go about it, that's part of the reason why we as staff just walked away. Because we knew that with what we got queued up, and the promises by no one in this room that had been made to folks, we had, we had to dance a dance. And we've done that, but it's gonna take us five years or so before we're able to kinda reassess. So if we give us five years, and when we start working the problem, I think we're gonna be able to, to come to some favorable terms and, and create a community that, that the community wants. And by community, I just don't mean our neighbors that are taxpayers here, but are folks that are affiliated and connected to Goddard that aren't necessarily within Goddard. And so, one of the reasons why we have this myriad of things is, is we, we wanna focus on the things that we can control, and that we should be focused on. Which is, okay, what, what, what do we want with our aesthetics? What do we want for our design code? How do we wanna look at growth and annexation? And then at that point, begin to, to start moving forward again. But, but we've got a lot of really wonderful things going on, but we wanna just make sure that we understand that we're not getting too far out in front of our skis. So with that being said, we still gotta get back to the pole signs and figure out, are, are we happy that we can come back and say, we wanna roll it over five years and then reassess? Or are you wanting us to look at crafting a document, um, that, that essentially gives them oratorium, or, or that looks at grandfathering? What would you guys, what's your opinion?
I'd say the easiest, the easiest thing at this point is just to do a five-year extension on it, and revisit it before the five years is up.
And I would, I would agree with that, with, with the one caveat being that they need, and the, the business owners need to be prepared to take action, if that's what's, you know, it can't just be, well, we're gonna come back in five years and reevaluate it. No, it's with the intent that you will, you will be prepared, you know, whatever the plan is, whether the city's gonna be able to pay for it, whether it's gonna be fifty-fifty, a hundred percent. You know, I mean, they need to, they, they need to understand that it's a serious five-year commitment. Because that's what's, that's what's happened now, is it's, it's just continued to dangle, 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 and now.
And send a one letter every year is not.
Now we're in a situation where even if we wanted them to comply, none of them are going to. And then we risk they're either gonna close their businesses or sell. And, you know, I don't, I don't think that's what we want to start happening, especially along Kellogg.
No.
And the sign, the height. Remember we had somebody come in and talk about the speed? If you're doing fifty mile an hour, your sign has to be so high and so big, and they'll never see it.
That was the rest.
Yeah.
Actually, he, he didn't talk about it, but we had the sign expert, they gave us height for speed. Well, the problem is, when you're going down Kellogg, if they do this flyover.
You ain't gonna see it anyway.
It's like driving through downtown Wichita. You might be able to see their signs, but how the hell you gonna get off to go there?
Yeah. Yeah. Well, and, you know, we can put a five-year limit on this, but we're gonna have some of the same issues that we've got right now.
Well, we're just prolonging the conversation. What, but at the end of the day, it's, what does the governing body want to do? Do we want to, in five years, plan on, and actually, once we get to the five-year mark, start coming up with a plan with our finances and saying, this is how much we think it's gonna cost us to put in the signs and start coming up with a budget? You don't, you're probably not gonna be able to do it all at once, but progressively, you start attacking.
Well, with.
Well, if we give them five years, they can save up the money and pay for themselves.
You need to start that.
Well, yeah, I will, I will, I will, I mean, what if we don't have the finances in order?
Right, we don't need to give them. Right. We don't need to give them money. If we're gonna give them five years, they can save up and pay for it themselves.
Yeah.
And I think our money be better spent fixing
The roads.
The Kellogg, you know, the area in front of it to encourage them to participate. That's...
The other thing about the R cut that's going is, it's gonna slow traffic down quite a bit. So the argument of going too fast, I think that's gonna wash out pretty quick.
Kellogg speed's going to be roughly 40 to 45.
Right.
And you'll see that also in Wichita coming out this way.
Rather than holding another stoplight, remember?
Well, when you're, when you're, when you're wanna go somewhere, what do you do? You pick up the cell phone. Siri, where's Pizza Hut at? You don't look for the damn sign. You ask Siri where it's at, you drive there.
R cut.
Where they heading, stuff like that?
The big sign doesn't make crap.
Right, R cut.
Right in the middle of the highway.
Right in front of Genesis.
There'd be a little intersection there.
Unless you missed that, maybe.
Yeah.
You must've missed that one.
We haven't had any.
One of the three out there.
Like, oh, weird.
And on the side road, there're gonna be one way.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And it'll have a crosswalk, too, for Mid Street.
It wasn't under the purview of the planning commission, that's the government.
Ah, okay, I was gonna say.
The R cuts on 54, which is a KDOT jurisdiction, so that was at the discretion of the governing body and some staff working with it. And KDOT, of course. Mostly KDOT.
KDOT.
KDOT engineers have to approve the design completely, and they had ultimate...
So it's, all that traffic is just gonna come to a halt, so everybody's gonna be able to see?
Yeah.
Small signs.
Look around and gawk at all this.
Yeah.
All this small signs.
And we have...
They've got several flags on it.
We also have the authorization and MOU to put in on the stoplight eventually.
I know, which you read the top one.
So at the counter and off the Kellogg.
That's how it works. Well, you know what you're looking for. You know, you know what business you're looking for, and you read the monument sign to see which area it's in.
No, no, it's Google.
Well, I guarantee you in five years, if you guys extend this, if you want to extend it, you're gonna, in five years, we're still gonna be having this conversation.
Yeah.
If you choose to force them to spend their money, if you're gonna do that, then just do it now. But I guarantee you in five years, you're gonna be having the same conversation.
I would agree.
Especially if they don't participate in some way. Then why don't we think about grandfathering, right, the ones that are there?
Are those gonna go one way? Before any overpasses talked about, flyover? I mean, that'll be a fixture as soon as...
Okay, it's kind of been a work in progress. And in fact, we just finished the fill checks with KDOT last week. And we're, as it currently stands, the the south side will be one way. And it will not even be a throughway because of how that intersection's laid out in KDOT's median requirements. When we first applied for this three or four years ago, I can't remember the exact date, we just applied for a simple at-grade intersection, just like what you would see. And due to the number of traffic, the volume of traffic, and the layout of the frontage roads and future planning and all this stuff, the stacking was gonna be too great, so they went with this R cut concept. And it'll be the first R cut of its kind in Kansas. But with that, too, means that the designs are kind of still a little bit evolving. But as it currently stands on the south side, it'll be a one-way going eastbound. And then if you want to go all the way through, you're gonna have to go on to Crown Drive and then kind of do a little dippy-doo U-turn around the median to get back onto the frontage road to head all the way back east, as opposed to just jumping on Kellogg, taking it over, and then exiting onto 187 to get back into Walmart. So it's, and again, that's with the last round of checks, which is different than the previous couple. So it's kind of evolving and...
So currently, then, the north side stays two-way?
Yes, currently.
Isn't that an R cut right there at Junction City, coming up from, you know, how you go past that?
There's a couple of residential R cuts, but none on...
You're talking about under I-70?
Yeah, under I-70.
Well, that's, no, well, that one, you go, you stay on the same side, and then it crosses over. That's different.
As much sales taxes.
That's a different policy concept.
And what about the one that over on Park?
So what do we want to do? We just want to prolong this conversation for five years? What do we want to do?
I mean, there's gotta be a stop to new pole signs. I mean, is that already in place?
That really is, the issue is if we stop new pole signs and, you know, if businesses change hands, as they will...
They have to replace it.
Yeah. When a business changes hands,
Yeah.
then we can require a monument sign.
So grandfather the current ones in place?
Current owners.
The way the regulations read right now, pole signs are not allowed.
Oh, they aren't, okay.
No, no, the way everything is defined, there's no pole signs. And the ones that are in existence, the big contention is that all new businesses have to have monument signs. The contention is that all existing pole signs have to be monument signs by the end of this year. And that's where all the pop-up kind of comes about.
So once a renter moves out of a building, then the owner of that building needs to...
It'd be very difficult for us to track when something moves out and another owner takes ownership.
Right, I know, right?
It'd be very difficult for us to find that.
But can we be as specific as if the current sign is replaced? So if we, like, if we grandfather someone in, and they replace their sign, it has to be a monument sign, or would they be grandfathered in to?
It'd be grandfathered in, yes.
Whatever they want.
Yeah, so grandfathered sign, usually the pole sign is not replaced, it's the face that's replaced. And so that would be allowed under current regulations. If they took the whole pole out, they couldn't really put another pole sign back in. But if they just change the face out, scrub down the pole, and put a lacquer on it, that's fine. So a pole sign's gonna exist in perpetuity, basically, as long as we allow, the grandfather ones to exist. That's everyone's discretion.
Don't we have some control over that, though?
Yes and no. I mean, once it's grandfathered, it's generally grandfathered. Non-performing uses have different stipulations depending on how they're now. If you wanted to amend it and say that all grandfathered ones are grandfathered, and once they're ready to, you know, change it in some way, then we could, we could have it that it was required to be a monument sign at that point.
So we grandfather the current ownership of the signs right now? So going forward, if the ownership changes, then they need to know that they have to put in a monument sign at that point? Is that what we want to do?
I think that makes more sense than...
New business comes in, they have to put in a monument sign and replace it?
They're already looking at some of the other things that have to come up, and we're gonna talk about here in a little bit. And so monument sign is just part of the package.
There we go.
Now, are we talking sale of the building or just different use? Change of the sign.
No, you can't do, you can't just do the change of the face or the...
No, I mean, you can't, only have to change to a monument sign if the actual building sells, rather than the occupancy.
If Russ gets the dance studio and swaps them out, he can't put in a monument sign, just because of the dance studio.
I ask about the sale of the building.
If he sells the building, then I would assume that the new owner would put in, is that what you guys are saying? Is that what you guys are wanting?
I think that makes sense if there's gonna be a transaction.
A transaction of ownership. Goddard cuts the pole down.
I think the new leasing would not, our new leaser wouldn't require a new sign, that's the question.
Right.
Like if Ginger goes away and a new restaurant comes in.
Right.
Do they have to change, do they have to...
They have a wall sign anyway.
Right, but I'm just, as the example.
Yes.
You know, but even, even leasing's have to put those signs up. The person that rents that building has to put a sign up there. I mean, I know businesses that went in that paid for their own signs.
That's your hotel, right?
Well, if it's down to someone that's leasing, then they're not gonna foot the bill for a whole new monument sign to get in there. There's, it's just gonna be an empty space.
Right. It's gotta be the transfer of ownership.
Have the ownership of the building now.
Yeah, it can't be the lease.
Transfer of ownership.
I'll add a grand to that.
Well, it's the recommendation, not any, it's up to the planning commission, I think, when they come in there.
I think the lease people have to figure this into their lease cost, too. I mean, it may not be as demanding as change of ownership, but...
I guarantee, like what Michael said, if you, if you force a new lease tenant to pay for a monument sign, Russ ain't gonna be able to really fill that building. Because that's a massive cost.
Monument sign, generally, you're gonna have multiple, you're gonna have multiple faces. It's just, once the monument sign exists, the tenant's just changing that face on that monument sign. If we had every lease, every tenant under a building put up a monument sign, you'd have 10 monument signs on one lot. We don't really want that.
Can you charge higher taxes for a pole sign?
Well, even Russ's sign has multiple signs on it.
That's right.
So I can't see the leasing moving out of it.
You're supposed to pay, okay, you're supposed to pay taxes on pole sign, right?
I don't think there's...
You pay a fee.
Yeah, you pay a fee to the city for a pole sign.
You pay sign, you pay it for the full permit. And if you're changing, even if you're just, for example, Squiggles and Giggles sold to Launchpad, all they did is take the face down, put a new face up, that costs $25.
Oh, right.
Not a, it's not a tax.
It's not a tax.
It's not profitable. Well, maybe we need to raise that up.
Good idea. So you get them.
Okay, clear as bud?
Very good.
Good. Good win, bud.
Good thing we're streaming it, we can go back.
You can read that, can you read that back to us there?
Yes, it says, dear lord, no. I think we have a good, some good marching orders for changing, for the sale of the building and transfer of ownership, be required to tear down a pole sign and put up a new monument sign. And that's basically, we would get rid of the amortization period then.
Do we need to...
Well, the only, the only problem I see with that is, you're talking about five or six businesses on one monument sign. Would that, people around that building be forced to go in with that then, if there's more than...
Every monument sign, there'd probably be one monument sign per lot. So if one building's got 10 occupants on it, then it'd be, that monument sign would be divided by 10 for the cost. Every lot has one monument sign. So as soon as you go to another lot with another business on it, they would have to have their own monument sign. If they wanted to go in on it, which is a good question, I mean, that'd be something for consideration. Typically, you just see...
That'd be up to the new owner and their tenants, though, right?
Right. And if they wanted a partner to be on that as well, I mean, now we could talk about one monument sign for, I don't know, 200 linear feet or 300 linear feet, and then you have one monument and another one. That's it. It's a good point. Do you have any thoughts on that?
Just have their building ad, rest beside their names, such and such a number, when you see the monument, look for that number. I mean, that's, that's the way it's done in the malls, where the strip malls in Wichita, isn't it?
It just depends on the Bradley Fair, for example, and different areas of Wichita, you have monument signs that have maybe five or six businesses on that one sign, and then you have another monument sign down the road. Not that far down the road, though, usually at the next turn-in. And then you have another monument sign with five or six businesses on that one, and then at the next turn-in, you have another monument sign with five or six businesses on that one.
I'm gonna bring up a question about the Main Street corridor signage down there. I mean, it's been brought to me that it'd be nice to have multiple business signs, you know, for people that are just driving to Kellogg corridor. Say, hey, you know, we've got these other businesses down here, you know, that...
You're talking about like our Main Street, like Main Street's this way, type of sign? Yeah, directional sign?
Right. Well, just like, you know, these businesses are on Main Street, you know, you got the post office, you got the, you know, street, all these things that...
The problem we run into is KDOT.
Yeah, and that's what MICA had reached out, because we've had this issue. And we checked even prior to MICA, and then MICA on its own checked. And the signs that are there are what KDOT allows.
That's it.
And for us to put in the kind of signs, because we had even talked about decorative signs that we could, you know, individually list them that were kind of nice. But then they're, we're so far off that it's ineffective, because they're set back so far from what KDOT requires. It's problematic. And we know that we don't make people happy when we say that.
And we're in a business to make the people happy, right?
We try, we really try.
You gonna change any when the light goes out?
No, KDOT still owns all of that, basically.
Right, and no thing would change their opinion here. Here are what rules going down, though.
We can always ask them. It doesn't hurt to reach out, but they do have full authority, it's true.
I was kind of thinking about, you know, you pull up to, on 235, pull to an exit or something, they tell you, these businesses are down.
The big blue sign.
Yeah, the big blue sign, and it's just got a small, whatever, little logo.
They sell those. So like when you're on Kellogg and you see Starbucks a quarter of a mile down Seneca, Starbucks pays for that.
Right.
So we could do that. If the businesses on Main Street wanted to pay KDOT, KDOT might. That's something that we haven't looked at. We looked at, can we put up a sign, so...
Well, for most of these businesses, that would make some sense. I mean...
Yeah. We'll certainly follow up on that.
Are we ready to move on?
At your discretion.
Mr. Mayor. Next time.
Next time.
All right, so no less easy, no more difficult design standards. So as the city grows, more businesses are being attracted to residential boom that has been experienced, as I see new potential clients in a burgeoning market. All new commercial buildings typically acquire a site plan, which outlines what the architectural style of the building is, as well as the building material. As construction costs increase, some property owners desire to build rolled metal buildings on commercial lots for the principal building or for an accessory building. Design restrictions do not restrict these types of structures, and some new buildings haven't allowed to be built with rolled metal. They do have a required metal face to be clad with something else like stucco, stone, brick, et cetera. This is the current subdivision regulation, so. Metal structures either for storage use or business, business usage of a square footage written 200 feet shall have sides facing metal cladding, or, shall not have sides facing metal cladding. Facing material for these structures shall be stone, bricks, stucco, or other approved materials. That, this seems like a catch-all, and it's written very well. The problem is, this is design standards that follow the site plan. Site plan says applicability, which means when does a site plan come into play? All private and public principal land uses shall submit site plans, and all require drawings, see Part 3 for approval by the planning commission, except single-family and duplexes unless the latter are arranged in a courtyard or group setting. So if somebody submits a building permit for an accessory building, for example, it's not gonna have a site plan, so there won't be any design standards, so they can do rolled metal, kind of like the building that we have on Main Street that recently. That one is technically accessory, because there's already a principal building on the lot. All new principal buildings, like an empty lot, and they want to put a building on it, this would come into play, this portion right here. And then the question comes, should rolled metal be allowed if the facing is different, or should it be prohibited? And should this only apply to principal structures or accessory structures as well? Bearing in mind that we're, when we assume accessory here, we're gonna assume commercial, we're not gonna probably prohibit it for residential. But, and once again, it's at the discretion, leisure of the governing body and the planning commission, if they think that no residents should have rolled metal detached garages or something of that nature.
Except the one off Main.
Main, yeah. That's commercial, though, so...
And this is required even in industrial areas?
No, yes, yes it is. If it's a commercial, a commercial is broad, speech means industrial. See, industrial also, if it's a principal building, yes, they would have to submit a site plan, and they would have to do something other than rolled metal. But if it's an accessory, meaning that you already have a principal building and you're saying, I want to add more storage, Right. then an accessory building doesn't have a site plan, no rolled metal, it doesn't, it can be rolled metal, it doesn't have to have stucco or whatever.
For example, like Mayor Specialties, if they wanted to add in another shed...
Shed's accessory.
Okay, and then they just put metal on it? That's against the current status?
No, that's allowed.
That's allowed.
Only principal buildings are required to have something other than rolled metal.
Where else in the city would people be putting metal buildings?
Main Street is the, kind of the big one that came up. So when certain property owner submitted an accessory building permit, it exceeded a certain amount of square footage, which means it has to be, it has to be a building permit instead of just an accessory permit. So we have an accessory permit, we have a building permit. If the accessory exceeds a certain square footage, it requires it to be a building permit, but no site plan is required. It's just a building permit. And so once they pulled the building permit, they built the building, and then you have something that's rolled metal, because there was no dictate that it had to be something other... because there was no dictate that it had to be something other than rolled metal, or it had to have facing, because it's considered accessory. And so that's kind of where the problem came about, it was kind of a loophole situation where if he was building a secondary building, or it was an empty lot and he was building a principal building, it would have been required to have a different facing, it had to be stucco or something on top of the rolled metal. In this case, this one was able to sort of sneak through a sort of a logistic loophole, and that's kind of what has been coming up a lot, where people have asked, both in favor and against, more people have said, is this allowed? They don't care, and some people have said, it looks terrible. And so, it comes up before the planning commission and the governing body. Do you want to prohibit any rolled metal in the future, or should all rolled metal be allowed, and that just has to have facing? Or is all rolled metal allowed? So that's kind of where we are.
I, I thought it, at least on the main building, we had said that, uh, the front and at least a wainscote on the sides, and why wouldn't that apply to an accessory building? I know that by ordinance, it does not.
Right.
Why doesn't that make sense? If it, if the accessory building is gonna be visible from the street...
Right.
Then it should follow the same guidelines as the main building.
We could certainly enforce it that way if you would like us to include that.
That means, that means your accessory garage in your backyard needs to have a brick front?
Right.
First stop, right? That's never gonna be seen by anybody.
No, no, if, if, if the building that you're building, like the one down here, is quite visible to traffic, then it needs to conform to the same thing as the main structure. If it's back in your backyard, and nobody can see it, it's not part of the, the view as you're going down the street, then maybe there's a little bit of a wiggle room in there, but...
But if you're on the corner lot? And the side of it would have to be, that is the same?
The side that faces... Well, what have we got, fourteen metal buildings on Kellogg?
Yeah.
Well...
Yep.
You know, Ursulans was gonna build east of town, and they were told it had to be a brick-and-mortar stru- structure.
Yeah.
And they built it in town, so they could build a metal building. Isn't that the way it was?
Is that considered in-town, right there? Yeah, it is, isn't it? So they were able to build a metal building in-town?
With brick front.
With the brick front?
Sort of, yeah.
But they were gonna build a, just a plain old metal building outside of town, right? That's what you're saying?
The property owner, when they were gonna build east of town, said, no, you can't just put up a metal building out here, it has to be a, a brick and, brick or stucco or brick-and-block building.
Oh, really? So that's why they moved here?
That, that's my understanding.
I would think, I think if it's visible from the street, they need to have a good facade on that front.
I agree with that completely.
But I mean, if it's in somebody's backyard, I mean, and they're the only ones looking at it, I don't see any reason why they should have to brick it up. I don't know.
Many covetous take care of that.
Yes and no. Sometimes it does run into it, some HOAs are more stringent than others.
Most of them around here are, it has to be the same as the house.
Yeah. In the newer neighborhood, yeah.
Right.
Are you able to put like a vis- uh, visibility portion in there, to where it kind of almost gives you the, the opinion?
Um, I, I'm granted a certain amount of latitude, um, I think some of these, if it's residential, it might be a little bit more difficult, but if it's commercial, it'd be easier for me to be able to say, this clearly needs to have a different type of facing. Residential's gonna be very difficult, I imagine.
Residential, I don't see a problem, because the HOAs will take care of it.
And the residential, you're not gonna be able to see the same way.
Depends on the size of what they're building, but even if they build a very big one in the backyard, the HOA will take care of it, yeah.
We could just require, um, so we're not gonna prohibit rolled buildings, but we were gonna require all rolled buildings to have a different facing um, on the facade, or would you want the sides to, or any part? Because if you say visible to the public, um, the property you mentioned up the street is greater than the principal buildings, visible to the public on almost all sides, except for on the west side, that would require faces on three sides.
Anything just facing the street itself.
Just facing the street?
That's my personal opinion, and at least up to the soffit level, wouldn't you say?
Which, which street though? If you can see it from the east-west street?
Well...
Well, if it's the second lot.
If you're a corner lot, this side, this side.
Yeah.
Yeah, has to have a nice facade to it.
There you go.
Now, if you're looking down between the two buildings, no, I don't think that has to happen, if you're driving down the road and looking between the two buildings.
You're just looking at too much then.
Yeah. Better pay attention to the road.
Right.
Why?
At least, they say that point to the soffit level.
Okay.
So if they get ten-foot sidewalls, you're ten-foot mayor.
So in this particular case, we're gonna continue to use the example of the street. Main Street, there's a building in front of it, the accessory building's behind it, is it still facing Main Street at that point? Would we require just the east side of it?
I'd have to see that example.
Well, the parking is on the south elevation, so it's wide open on the south elevation of that particular building, but the building, the main building covers the majority of...
The front?
The, the east elevation of that building.
Just up partway though?
Yes.
Partway.
Yeah, it, it still extends quite a ways.
Yeah, to the gable top of the peak. But if you're going along the soffit elevation, it's really not very, much higher. I mean, what, what makes more sense, because you're gonna see from the... Yeah, I mean, they're gonna, they're gonna brick and block up the back, you know, behind the building, in between the two buildings? Or what's gonna be seen from like the parking?
Yeah. I think you were talking about the parking for the library.
It is parking for the library.
Yeah, and that's what you really see on that building, is the south side.
Well, and that building's history, we're not gonna be able to do anything with that one.
Correct.
So, I, I think we need to move forward with...
I don't know, he's got it over there halfway built.
You know, what, what you can see, what's, what's gonna be the appearance for the city going forward? I mean, if, if we, uh, we can't go back and change the fourteen metal buildings on Kellogg...
That's where the armory is.
You can.
Don't say that very loudly.
Make the sign, or this'll ease you.
Do you have the metal, TNT have the metal?
Is the metal on the front of it?
What's the, the, the snow cone place, what's metal, what's on the front of that snow cone?
Stucco and wood.
Stucco and wood?
Yeah, and there's some brick there.
It's, it's bricks on the south side, I think, right?
So, so there's really no limitation on how big an accessory building can be compared to the...
Residential, it has to be, it can only be one story, and it can, can't be taller than the principal building, but that's only in residential. Commercial, there's no limit, because a principal building could be offices, but the offices could be, the business could be RV storage, so then the accessories buildings behind it could be taller than the principal building. So there's reasons for there to be a little less restriction on the commercial and an industrial side. Residential, I think we can pretty much lock that up pretty well, if they delay, and the restrictions that we have currently. It's just, commercial, there's a little bit more flexibility, which can cause some consternation.
But, but we can write it in...
We can.
That, uh, we need the visible facades up to, to a standard.
We could.
Yeah, we could do that, and then if it's an accessory building, and they think it's far enough off the street, then they can apply for a variance.
Yes, we could draft that as a variance, acceptable, you could just tell them...
That we have to review all, all buildings that are gonna be rolled metal?
We could do that as well. You would have quite a bit.
Unfortunately, if we take the rolled metal out of the equation, a hundred percent, it's gonna be too expensive for anybody, but a big franchise to come in here and build anything.
Well, plus, I mean, I don't think it's necessarily up industrial road, you know, it's extremely commercialized.
Yeah.
Okay, do you have your marching orders?
Very much so.
Thank you, Cameron, you wanna move on to the next item?
Absolutely.
I think, I think a person could have put a deal there for a variance, like if they built an industrial park, and no one's ever gonna see their business as far as driving down the street.
We could exclude industrial businesses from the requirement, if you would like.
Well, I mean, you could, make them apply for a variance, maybe.
I, I think that makes more sense, but...
Make them apply for a variance.
We've, we've got some control of it, otherwise if, if we write it out, then it's just a done deal. But if, if we force more, at least come before us and say, hey, if you're...
Something in your own place, it's industrial.
So we got two industrial locations, right?
Yes.
Industrial Park over here, and the two over behind.
Dylan's Warehouse is industrial as well.
Okay. Huh?
I think Dylan's Warehouse is industrial as well.
What else were you thinking?
What about over here, what's the road behind Ace Hardware? Isn't that a industrial?
This is industrial, this is Dylan's Warehouse, and this is Industrial Park.
If it's industrial, they have to come before the planning commission and ask for a variance.
Wait, I don't think that's zoned industrial, Brad.
Yeah, what is that, what is that over there?
What, just general business?
Yeah.
Which one are you looking at?
These...
Behind the bedroom.
These lots, right here?
Those are all, that's all general commercial.
General commercial.
General commercial, yeah. But that way, if they're tucked off in their little world, you'll have the opportunity to say, we don't need that.
Right, if they're in the industrial...
So industrial would still have to go through the code, but they, I guess anybody could ask for a variance though. Commercial business could also ask for a variance, and then we have the discretion of the planning commission. Planning commission grants variances, would that be acceptable?
Yeah, I think so.
So, at that area, as I just pointed out, what, what would that then be?
That's general commercial, they would have to ask for a variance if they did not want to put, put a facing on their rolled metal, but they would be required to. Currently, there's a business that's being proposed in that area, um, and they are being told that they have to do something other than rolled metal, they have to put some sort of facing on. And they are on a power, so it'd have to be on the east end of the side.
Are we ready to jump to the next one?
At your leisure.
Please do.
Zoning, so this has been the commercial residential mixed-use. Some of you are somewhat familiar with this, but I'll try to run through it pretty quickly. Mixed use is sort of in vogue right now, sort of very popular, especially on the coast, but commercial zoning with a residential component is typically referred to as mixed use. It's a structure that hosts both commercial and residential uses, and is often seen as commercial on the first floor and residential above. This type of land use is becoming more prominent across the nation for development, and it's, it's a positive trend, and it introduces more density for potential commercial customers in a smaller area, as well as increasing commercial property value. Currently, the only zoning that will allow for this is the central business district, which is C1, which is from Santa Fe to Third, um, which is only a couple blocks from Santa Fe Third. Amending the general business district, C2, to allow for residential mixed use would open this zoning class up to host more residential rental properties off commercial lots. So this kind of answers the question that, uh, Commissioner, Councilmember Trailer was talking about, with REL and High Cow, over their business, they have a residential unit that's being built on top of a commercial. They originally approached the city and said, we want to build a residential unit on the side. I said, no, zoning prohibits that, but you can build it on top, so that's what they're currently doing, is residential unit on top of commercial, and that's what you see here. So, general business district says, no building shall be used for residential purposes except on existing residence, which is illegal, non-conforming, but the central business district says dwelling units constructed in conjunction with and above the first floor of business establishments is allowed. So central from Santa Fe to Third, you can build a top, that is allowed, but in the general commercial, which is everything that we were talking about, basically on fifty-four, you can't have it for any type of residential purpose at all. And so, the question that comes up, if somebody wanted to build multifamily in the Goddard Galleria, or if they wanted to build basically, um, multifamily or dwelling units, or something in conjunction with and above on fifty-four, or in any type of zone, general commercial, it would be prohibited? Is that something that we'd want to see moving forward? And that's kind of what we're opening up to you, because we're starting to see some more of those.
Are, are you talking about a business on the first floor offices or whatever?
Yes.
And condominiums or apartments or whatever above that?
Yes, yes, very much so.
Well, isn't that pretty common almost everywhere?
Yes, but it's prohibited in the general, in our general code right now. The way that our code reads with the commercial business district, it specifically, it specifically says it can't be used. So right here, it says, no building shall be used for residential purposes, that means, right now, if you want to do that in the, in anywhere that's on general commercial, you couldn't do that.
So you couldn't put an apartment complex in the Galleria, right?
That's right, you cannot do that.
Oh, we need to get rid of that. Yeah, that's, that's no bueno.
Yeah.
That's no good.
Well, and, and the flip side of that is, is we're regressing about a hundred years, when everybody that had a hardware store had their house above it.
Yeah, that's true, that's a, that's an interesting point, um, it comes up in planning classes quite a bit. And city manager.
We've, we've got to pull the water... Open that up, or we're just shooting ourselves in the foot.
I'm just wondering, I mean, this is an optimal example, but if the Brahms wanted to put an apartment on top of it, do we really want that?
I don't think they'd want to put apartments on top.
I know that, that was an extreme...
But yeah, I mean, technically speaking...
Or are we, are we suggesting we want to be more specific in our, in what we're thinking? You know, I mean, it has to be more than one unit, or...
We can generalize it, I mean, all, all commercial buildings are required a site plan, so it's gonna come before the planning commission um, for review anyway, but it's, it's really at your discretion, do you want to be as prohibitive as possible? Or you want to include more, be more inclusive with that type of?
I was just curious, I mean, I just didn't want to...
But yeah, I mean, technically, yes.
I think it would encourage, sorry, encourage, you know, vertical, right? Those stores will get trashy, and that's why, for lack of a better word.
The reason it's a benefit to, to commercial businesses is because typically, if you have two stories of commercial, you're assessed commercial twenty-five percent on the bottom floor and twenty-five on the top. If you do commercial and residential on top, you're assessed twenty-five on the bottom and eleven-point-five on top. So the developer saves money quite a bit, in terms of tax-wise, and so he's inclined, or she is inclined, to build mixed-use development. And that's why it's becoming a little bit more prominent, because it also encourages density, so you have potential clients right next to a business, which improves the businesses, especially those that are in like, central, in a central business district or Main Street, so it encourages that as well.
Yeah, you go to Leewood, um, where the AMC Theater headquarters are, or where, or something like that, they, uh, I mean, that's, that's the whole site plan, and you've got apartments and condos everywhere, uh, on top of restaurants and, you know, various...
It's the only place they could build it, to be quite honest, because I spoke with Mark Ternison at, at Leewood, when I was interning, when I was applying for an internship there, and the whole reason they did that is because Leewood is half million dollar, million dollar homes, and nobody wants the residents to be, they don't want multifamily near them, so they put all the multifamily on top of the commercial, and it actually benefited the city. And they're also landlocked, so they're kind of surrounded by Olympic Park.
No, I, I wasn't suggesting it was a bad idea, I just didn't know how, if it wanted to be any specific, put any restriction or specifics on what it should look like, that's the question, so...
Yeah, I think one of the concerns that's come up before is, does that mean somebody can just live inside of their commercial structure? Currently, the code says you can't just live in a commercial structure, but if you add, if it was built as a dwelling unit on top of a commercial structure, that would be considered allowable use, where somebody could habitate inside of a residential structure built on top of a commercial structure.
So...
Or in conjunction with, if it was drafted differently in the...
Kind of a related question though, on standard, is my, uh, my grandpa's old lumberyard over here, they're building units back behind there, back behind the snow cone place?
On top of.
On, right, but is there any kind of enforceable standard on what they have to look like?
Design-wise, in terms of architectural, or?
Yeah.
No, not architecturally, no, not really, I mean, design standards are supposed to be in conformance with just the general layout, but I mean, it's gonna be commercial on bottom and residential on top, and then they're gonna be wrapped in, you know, or if it's built with wood, in this case, this one's wood, then, I mean, architecturally, no, it's not gonna look like, um, a single-family house, or detached, a traditional single-family house. If you wanted to have more stringent design guidelines, especially on Main Street, we could definitely take that into consideration.
If it's on top of a commercial house on a business district, it's gonna have to have that business facade all the way up the front, right?
No, not necessarily, I mean...
These are totally back behind, they're, you can see it from Santa Fe, but not from Main Street.
I think those are, you were talking about the garages?
Yeah.
Well, I'm, I'm just saying, if they stacked a dwelling on top of a business, it would have to have that facade all the way up to the top.
Only if it was rolled metal, it could be wood on top, it doesn't have to, if it was rolled metal on the bottom, rolled metal on top, it would have to have a facade the whole way. But you don't typically see rolled metal for residential, so you would see rolled metal on the bottom of the facade, and you see wood built on top of that, and that doesn't, wood is wood, it's not a prohibited material, so...
I think we should definitely get rid of it, it's prohibiting our growth, so, that's, I mean, I'm surprised it was in there.
I think that's good.
I agree.
Maybe.
Okay, that's one of the easier items.
I would love to see the next item.
Zoning, so this is H.4 zoning.
Let me make this one.
This is, we're all in urban intent, so this is, basically, we'd be talking about drafting a new zoning classification. So as the city grows, it opens up an opportunity for the boundaries of the city to be expanded and annexation to occur. And when this happens, certain properties that have existed as stockyards, horse stables, or other county-related uses become nonconforming almost immediately when they are annexed. These land uses have no definition under our current zoning, and would be either nonconforming or require a conditional use permit for certain properties as they are brought on board. To prevent this, a less stringent and more county-friendly zoning classification would be introduced to alleviate the necessity for wrestling with these new land uses and code violations of the property owner who agrees to annex, if they choose to annex. So the new zoning classification would be RUI, rural with urban intent, and it's malleable, we can always change it into a different one before it's formally adopted. This recognizes that property is rural and cannot be immediately serviced by the city with water and sewer, et cetera, but the intent is to bring it online with city services in the future. So it's put on a, kind of in a holding pattern for future services, but it's still in the city limits proper. It just has a different zoning classification. Zoning classification will allow properties as is, with no code compliance or land use issues. New zoning will allow the city to define its growth area with annexation and grow efficiently without feeling the need to compete with other municipalities. Wichita Central County currently has a rural residential zoning classification, which could be emulated. And so, it's basically almost everything that's surrounding us right now is classified as, in zoning, with Wichita Central County as rural residential. So we're kind of emulating this, or at least I'm proposing it. I wish you would emulate that and take that zoning classification, we would create our own, called rural with urban intent. Basically, it's a rural property, and at some point, we're going to start servicing it in the future, maybe two or three years down the road, with water and sewer and everything else. But it is within our city limits, it's just got a more lax and relaxed zoning classification. So if they did want to jump on board, for example, the property over there off of Maple, 183rd, on the northeast corner, is a horse, is a horse lot. That's prohibited in the current code. If they wanted to join, they would immediately be considered nonconforming, and there would be all sorts of code violations. We could almost send the lenders immediately. But if we had a different zoning classification that was more friendly towards that type of land use, they could jump on board and they could be on their natural zoning classification.
I wouldn't have any problem with that, as long as when they decided they needed services, they had to change their classification.
That's something that could be drafted, if you would like to see that.
So if they wanted water and sewer, then they'd have to change classifications of what they are, and fall under new restrictions.
Now, it's a loser horses.
That's a question.
If they want water and sewer, yeah.
But why, why would they need to change?
I think they've been there for a long time.
Well, because.
From a tax purpose, or?
Well, because if they're wanting water and sewer, then we're giving them something, and they're going to have to give us something back to fall in line. I mean, why would we give them water and sewer on a big, huge acreage?
Typically, the intent of this, the soon to be person that's going to be developing this area, I mean, we're not going to be annexing a farm, or a ranch, or whatever, for no reason, because we intend to develop on it.
Right.
Because the soon to be developer has just purchased it, doesn't want to do anything with it, as of right now.
Or somebody might be sitting on 20 acres of agricultural, and they have a farm or a ranch. And so, we annex them, but we give them a very loose zoning classification. Then in five years, when they sell it, which they're inevitably going to do, the developer buys the land, they're going to rezone it to probably R1, which is very typical, at which point.
What I'm, what I'm saying is, is though, when we're trying to square off our borders, like going north up past Maple.
Right.
Those farmers aren't going to want to fall into hard restrictions, but they'd be okay coming into Goddard if they knew that, hey, this is loose and we can keep whatever we got. But when a developer comes in, all of a sudden, bang, the rules change.
Right, and I understand, I guess, but with your example for their 183rd and Maple, I mean, if they, if they chose to be annexed and wanted water and sewer, do we need a second rural classification that accounts for that need for those services, but allows them to keep their horses and whatnot? Because otherwise, if they want water and sewer, they have to get rid of, you know, they have to make a major change.
Yeah, I mean.
That's what I was asking, is, you know, I mean, if we need to tax them a little more because they're, they're doing water and sewer, great. Is that a rural two type situation, where it says, yes, you know, you have all the lax as you had before, but you want water and sewer, so now?
A lot of these, a lot of these properties, there are in the rural, they haven't been purchased out of the rural water districts.
That's right.
So, that leads into our other problem. No, we almost don't have authority to bring in water to these guys without permission from the rural water district.
Without paying them, yes.
Without paying these franchises, which are ridiculous.
It's about $5,000 per viewer, yeah.
Well, some of it is, yeah. I, I mean, these developers have to pay sometimes upwards of a million dollars just to get out of these franchises.
It's crazy.
I'm just curious.
So we don't, we don't have to be careful about that, because we wouldn't want to encroach on the rural water district, which has surrounded us on three sides. And so, if we offered to bring water to somebody who's on the rural water, we would be infringing on rural water districts. So the zoning would be, you basically bring them in, you let them keep their lagoons and water wells, or you let them keep the rural water district water. And the benefit would be that, now they're in the city limits, we can offer them different types of amenities. For example, our police department and things of that nature, but it's still pretty relaxed. They're allowed to have their boats and their RVs in the driveway, that type of situation, so. They're allowed to have goats and.
I think she was talking to me.
I think if you don't have some, some loose thing like that, you'll never get the land annexed north of Wichita before they jump around us.
Right, that'll be an item that we're discussing as well, coming up, if we have the time.
What services have to be given if you annex?
Unilaterally, you have to provide a service plan. But if it's petitioned, you don't. It's drafted into the petition, where if a property owner consents and the city consents, you can draft the petition to allow them to keep certain services that they currently have. It's only if we force them to annex that we would be required by state law to show a service plan of how we're going to bring sewer and water to them. So.
We don't have to, we just have to complain to do it?
We do, and it can be contested if we don't bring it to them right away. For example, the state could, if we annex a large swath of residential, and we didn't provide them services within five years, they could contest that and say that we didn't abide by the service plan that we had originally proposed, and they could, the state could force us to de-annex them. But if we sign a petition with the property owner and they say, yes, you can come on board, then we get a screw from there, so. It's considered a private agreement at that point.
Well, if we annex them under this, they would be paying us property taxes.
We could, but we could also draft it in the, in the petition that they would be receiving. We could reduce the amount of property taxes we have left on that, to make it more comparable.
All kinds of good stuff.
We would still make the property taxes.
We would, we'd be making more than we are, yes, that's right.
We lost them now.
But I would try, we would have to do it out of work, instead of the brain.
Yes.
To get them to do it.
Yes, very much so. It's just a way of, of bringing, of trying to get ahead and trying to define our boundaries in advance, and so.
You couldn't get McDonald's or bring you 20 chicken burgers.
No, that's what.
Chocolate water isn't.
Chocolate?
No, about the water.
There's a couple of lemon.
Yeah, the water tower into the water pressure in the city of Goddard, it's going to water.
Well, that'd be, that'd be up to the public works department. We're looking at where we can introduce more water wells and everything else. That falls under the Harvey Public Works and City Engineer. I can't really speak on that, I don't know. I just qualify myself immediately if I'm answering this question. We are going to be looking at that.
Well, well, I mean, look at all the, the new subdivisions coming, water pressure is just going to keep going down and down and down.
Sure.
I mean, what, how tall is the water tower? 100 feet?
Yeah, I wouldn't know. That's all falls under Public Works and City Engineer, and I don't have any of those answers. You stick with the regulations and zoning.
What, what you're seeing with this deal is, somebody in the county can be annexed, especially if they apply for it.
Right.
But with this classification, they don't have to take anything. And the taxes would be comparable to what we're paying in the county.
Or lower, yes, depending on how we want to incentivize it to make it more desirable.
You're going to change your mind?
No, 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 I'm not changing my mind.
What does the governing body think about that type of proposal?
The new district?
Yeah, new zoning classification, that'd be a little bit relaxed.
I think that makes sense. Yeah, I mean, as we continue to grow, we're going to have to figure out how to deal with it, so, yeah.
Very much so.
Well, and I don't completely disagree with that, but I just, you know, I'm a control freak.
Is there any, is there any opportunity for any, anybody to abuse this classification within the city limits?
You can't rezone something at first, bringing it before the planning commission and the governing body. Rezoning is very difficult to accomplish without there being a clear goal.
Okay, good.
I got a question. It's kind of going into a different alleyway, but rural water districts tend to be more generous in their negotiations with farmers, ranchers, right? In pricing?
I wouldn't know, but I, I can assume that's probably true.
I think Larry's idea might not be the worst, because the whole intention of doing this is for future developments, single family development, correct?
Yes, pretty much.
And if we were to put something in place to where if they wanted to get onto the rural wa, or if they wanted to get onto the city water and sewer, rural water districts tend to be a lot more easy on farmers, small time guys, than a developer that's coming in and putting in a whole bunch of homes. These rural water districts, every deal is negotiable. And it's whatever that certain district, or they woke up that morning thinking that they were going to be able to get at that developer. And so, there's not a set price on any acreage. And one problem that we've been seeing is these rural water districts that mainly dominates our areas, number four, they've been very high priced in their fees, in their franchise fees. But if, if a farmer or whatever, if we were to be able to somehow negotiate to where they were to purchase themselves out of the rural water district, and then they're in the city with the intention of a developer to come in in the future, that would save developers a lot of money.
And make the farmers' land infrastructure, if they have one user out here, the infrastructure is pretty small, but if that's a development, all of a sudden, their infrastructure quadruples.
Right.
So.
But this is a way around dealing with this big priced franchise fees?
It's a good point.
I don't know. And maybe it's something that we approach the farmer or whatever.
Individually.
Individually, before this happens.
Right, every time, anytime we annex anybody, it has to go before the governing body, and they would have to sign a resolution saying that they're going to annex on, and then they're annexed 30 days after it's published in the city newspaper. So each resolution for annexation, if it came with special provisions, would have to be approved by the governing body.
And I think a lot of the farmers would prefer to come into Goddard if they knew that they didn't have to pay seriously high taxes, and that they could still keep farming and still keep doing whatever.
That's right.
But that Wichita couldn't gobble them up anymore.
That's our hope.
I think that's what does this, but we can work on that then, what you're talking about later. I think that accomplishes more than, that kills two birds with one stone. I'm fine with the way this reads, if you're okay with trying to work that, your deal out later. Is that all right?
Absolutely.
Is everybody on board?
Yes.
Okay.
Moving on.
Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, are you ready to proceed?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Let's move forward. So now we're going to switch a little bit. Tactics is now high density. Currently, we have several zoning classifications. Zoning classifications are adopted as a regulatory control over land development. As market trends change, zoning classifications should change as well to maximize land value and property taxes without compromising health, safety, and welfare. With residential housing considered a national issue and demand for rental properties increasing within the city limits of Goddard, this new zoning classification allows for streamlined entitlement process with revised bulk regulations for creativity, design, and density. These new zoning classifications need to be approved first by the planning commission and finally by the governing body. And once approved, the governing body, they will become official 30 days after publication in the city newspaper. So, the basic analysis would be higher density allows for single family and all types of residential structures. That way, if we did have a new zoning classification, nothing would be considered nonconforming, residentially speaking. It increases potential higher value properties to capture greater property taxes. It streamlines the entitlement process for multifamily developments while maintaining oversight over the new developments, and increases marketable land value for individual property owners. This is just another received file and open for discussion. Basically, we'd be drafting another zoning classification, that'd be R4, which is a much higher zoning and density classification in our current zoning classifications.
How much difference is it from the multifamily?
R3 is our current highest multifamily. It restricts one dwelling unit per, I think it's 5,000, 5,000 square feet. This one would basically allow for a lot more units to be on a smaller lot. And it would also allow for the bulk regulations to be adjusted, so you'd have something called zero lot line, which means that you could fit more units on a lot, but some of those units would actually straddle the property line instead of having the setbacks that you would typically see. One development that was proposing this last year and the year before was the threeplex that we have at 227 Cedar that's being built right now. They were originally proposing five units, but since they were shy of the square footage requirement under R3, they had to drop it to three units. And then to sort of, to be a little bit more forthcoming with the populace, they also dropped it from two stories to one, which is not necessarily a requirement, but they wanted to be more accommodating of the architecture of the surrounding area. But this would allow, this zoning classification would allow that to exist. And it would allow certain lots, if they were zoned that way, to allow for higher density and allow for more expensive properties to be built on it, or at least more valuable properties in that sense.
And you would lose the setbacks?
Basically, the way it could be drafted is that you could lose setbacks, or we could require 10-foot setback instead of a 25, which is traditional. It would be a 25-foot setback. You could have a 10-foot setback with a green buffer, which would allow more building to be built on the property. You're getting closer to what would be the central business district, which has zero setbacks, but it's more of a residential, so it's higher density in that way. But it'd be exclusively residential, it really couldn't be anything other than that, it would be a mixed use development. But that's something I would be taking.
Is that effective side property lines, then?
Yes, zero lot line means you could just push it right up to the side lot line. That currently, everything has to have six feet on side lot lines, 25 in the front, 20 in the back, unless it's platted differently. This one would be able to waive that, so you could put more up. Yes, St. Andrews is 25 in the front, 20 in the back, six on the sides. So does Spring Hill, so does The Seasons, Elk Ridge, anything R1 fits under those. Arbor Creek's the one that's different, because we platted it and we allowed for reduced front setbacks, so they're 20. They're 20 in the front, 20 in the back, six on the sides.
I don't have a problem with this. I think this is going to help. If an apartment complex wants to move in.
Very much so.
Does it require a site plan review?
That's the question. That'd be something that we'd want to take into account. Because right now, the way site plans are required is that if it's single family or a duplex, it's not required, but anything higher than a duplex, so they could build a duplex in this new zoning classification, because it'd be considered acceptable. Anything from single family all the way up to 10 units or more would be allowed, but not all of them would trigger a site plan. So if it was zoned R4, and somebody said, I want to build a single family detached, they could. If someone wanted to build 10 units, well, then it would trigger a site plan. But if they wanted to build a duplex, it wouldn't trigger a site plan.
Would there be a reason to avoid R1 if we were to, if we were to change the setbacks? I mean, if they were going to do a zero setback, single family, would we want to see that?
It'd be at the discretion of the planning commission. I mean, if they.
Single family, you're going to want.
I understand you're going, I'm just asking a question, you know, if, if we don't ask for it, it won't be in there.
I know, question is, I mean. I don't see it being an issue in a single family.
No, but duplex, maybe. I'm just asking, is there ever a point in there where you want to see it, that that's not triggered automatically? If we change the setback requirement?
I don't know, is you. Do you ever want to see a setback?
That's why I'm wondering.
Do you want a little bit of, a little bit of space?
What was that? I'm sorry.
Would you want a little bit of space like?
I would think so, that's why I would. Just asking a question. Just asking a question, are we gonna change the setback requirement if we do?
I just don't see anybody building right to the property line, unless you had something you never, ever had to do any work on.
Yeah, usually you'll see a zero lot line when the land is so radically expensive that it makes more sense to maximize the amount of dwelling units you're gonna build on.
San Francisco, you know, Boston, places like that, yeah. Like the row houses that you always see across the linear park in San Francisco.
That you can barely walk between?
Right.
You can't, yeah.
So, so are you suggesting we would not alter the setbacks, or?
No, the setbacks could be altered, but if they submit a site plan that showed that they were straddling the property line, which would be allowed, you could, that could trigger a site plan review if you felt that was unbecoming for that neighborhood, or it was unbecoming for that area. And you could require them to push it differently, adjust it accordingly. It's just how much you wanna see in terms of review and...
Or do we just minimize the setbacks?
That way, you can do that as well? This is an open site.
Take it from six to three. If you've got three here and three there, six feet between. They're actually doing that with a lot of patio homes right now.
Or nine if the one next to it's, you know...
I mean, the patio homes, there's very little room between them. So, or do we do that, just minimize the setbacks? Before we turn here?
Yeah, I'm not suggesting them to see them all, I just don't want someone to go from edge to edge and we not know about it.
Patio homes, they're not taking care of that side yard anyway, somebody else has done it for them. Yeah, so it's their advantage to have a smaller side yard.
They're also maximizing that many patio homes that you can put in that area.
Do we need to designate certain areas that are allowable for high-density?
Yeah, so that would be something that would have to be taken into account, which would be a...
Just because we approved this doesn't mean there are any, right?
Nope, no, any, all of them would have to either be a general rezoning, which would be our official zoning map, which would have to be approved by the governing body, which would be to re-designate a large swath of Goddard, or a small swath, but a swath nonetheless, into a different zoning classification. Or an individual would have to petition the planning commission for rezoning, and then go before the planning commission and then the governing body to get approved to get it rezoned. Right now, it's what's called a floating zoning classification, just like the RUI would be a floating zoning classification. We have it, but it's not in use. Currently. Currently. Of course, all of these, this is all received in file, we'll draft something, of course, and then it would have to be approved by the planning commission and the governing body.
So, you guys were saying three-foot, three-foot, six-foot?
Well, we're just gonna minimize the current setbacks. It'll all still have to be written, but...
Sounds good.
Okay. All right, we're on item H6, and there is an item H7. How are you guys feeling? It is now eight-thirty-two. Do you wish to proceed, Mr. Chair and Mr. Mayor?
Let's go on, we're in this...
He just hit it.
At your leisure, shall we proceed?
Absolutely.
Item H6, zoning map. So, the official zoning map of the city of Goddard was adopted in 2014. In 2016, the community development director, Kelly Bergeron, presented an ordinance changing the zoning map, and it was adopted as an ordinance of seven-eight-two. City staff would like to introduce a new zoning map that continues to reflect the ever-changing real estate market, although capitalized on land value and property taxes. This would require the approval of the governing body, and would be presented as an ordinance similar to 2016. City staff would like to get any comments and feedback, and will follow and revise zoning maps to take this into account, that we're not simply, we're not saying that this is what we would like to see specifically, but this is something that the trends, market trends are sort of leading us to think this might be a good idea. And then we wanna receive feedback from both the planning commission and the governing body to take this into account. But new zoning classification will apply to a portion of Old Goddard, where rentals are more prominent, properties are older, more likely to be requested to be rezoned. We've had six in total rezoning requests for Old Goddard, which we would consider north of Santa Fe, west of Goddard Road, south of US 54, and all the way over to Walnut. So, six requests in total for rezoning, or at least consideration for rezoning, not official requests, but some of them were official requests, which we have seen. So this is our current zoning. R1 is what you would say, traditional R1, single-family detached. You have your general commercial, industrial. What's hard to see, this is green, is a PUD. And what you can, really hard to see, it kinda gets washed out, this darker red is our central business district. You can see where the old Baptist church got rezoned and was approved. And then, which you can barely, rarely see, is this darker orange is our R2, which you can see more prominently over here in cloverleaf. And then you have a sort of washed-out green over here, which is our R3, multifamily, which is, that is metallurgical there in that center. So what we are proposing, and it takes into account what we just went over, which would be high-density residential and an RUI, which is rural-urban intent. High-density residential, as you can see, what we're talking about would be to introduce more high-density residential in this particular area, encircling our central business district, maximizing commercial value in this area, increasing density in this particular area in proximity to our new Starbond, and in line with the new businesses that are moving into our Main Street, and also a portion right over here along South Street. Something to be taken into account. Granted, like we said, with R4, if we were to rezone this R4, everything would be considered allowed. That way, we would not create any non-conformity, because that's something that the banks are very interested in, is non-conformity. And so are the insurance agencies, they wanna know if it's non-conforming. The reason they wanna know if it's non-conforming is because if something burns down, they wanna know if their property's gonna be invested. If we say it's non-conforming, it can't be rebuilt. But if R4 allows for that, then you could build duplexes in here that would streamline that process, three-plexes, four-plexes, row homes, and single-family detached as well, so...
What would be the maximum, like, everything in those lots?
Yeah, but the railroad property is that dark band.
Sorry, say that again?
What would be the maximum, like?
Depends on the lot size. Each lot is slightly different, so a smaller lot could really only accommodate whatever we classify R4 as if we wanted to rezone it R4. But a larger lot could accommodate a lot more. That three-plex is on a third of an acre. They originally wanted to put five units on a third of an acre, which would've been very ideal for the city, because it would've been close to $400,000. On an otherwise abandoned lot, we would've had five new water meters, five new water users. So that's that potential there.
Right.
It also incentivizes the private sector to go into an otherwise economically distressed area, maximize value there.
Isn't that the railroad property?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, it's railroad property, not anymore.
A little section there, just to south there, that's three lots, they're railroad.
Yeah, railroad lots.
This one right over here, there's a couple railroad lots in here, yeah.
Yeah.
This little one over here is where that...
Little building there?
Yeah, there's a, it's got a tree on it now, and there's an old, I think, yellow dart on the lawn, so we're trying to get that removed. It's considered a junk car stuck under a tree in that building off of, off of Road, so...
Well, I just don't know, is that one a fifty-unit apartment complex on one block or something?
Yeah, it would have to, they would have to have a lot of space to put fifty units on all, like, most of these are individual lots. It'd have to be a bigger lot to put fifty units, something, you know, closer to, I don't know how many square feet, but maybe two, an acre or more for fifty units, so...
What, what does this, what does this item accomplish, just pretty much a what-if?
Yes, this is a receiving file, and the zoning map is considered an official zoning map, that has to go before the governing body to basically approve. Obviously, since we're receiving and filing this, nothing's gonna be acted on today. It's just something to say, do we feel that this would be more prevalent, more agreeable with market trends, given that more and more people, in this section especially, are asking for rezoning and conditional use permits? They come before the planning commission for those? Or would you rather it be more prominent on the outskirts or in other areas?
That's actually where we need it. Is where we have it. Urban renewal, revitalization, nobody's gonna go into these empty lots and build a brand-new single-family house next to two-hundred-year-old houses. But you can sell that lot tomorrow, if you can put a five-plex on it, four-plex, if it's big enough, you can sell it tomorrow and somebody will build on it.
There we go.
Right, I mean, if they want a new single-family or whatever, they're gonna build out one development, so...
Right.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea.
Then it goes back to the fact who wants to put a five-plex on a dirt street in town.
Well, but the property value's gonna be cheaper, because nobody wants to build it.
It'll actually even make their property values more attractive to be able to sell that lot.
And once, once when you get a, once when you get a five-plex in there, the chances are, they may want that street paved, and then all of a sudden, you can say, "Okay, you gotta pay for it, but we'll do it."
There we go.
But this, this will have pitchforks, rotten tomatoes.
But on the governing body's side.
It'll start having ours.
We'll get all the good tomatoes.
It will be trapped in hell what you guys need.
They'll be here, they've been here before.
Yeah.
It'll be our third time with this review.
In the next twenty years, there's gonna be a lot of these pre-war homes that are gonna be, need to be bulldozed.
Oh, right. Nice, you don't have to sit up here.
Any homes are gonna go, it's gonna be them.
This will put a lot of dense population...
There's many benefits.
...down to Main Street, where we're trying to get people back to anyways.
We'll stick to the netting.
We have a lot of property around town that if people foresee a use for it.
And we've got a lot to reach back on that, three-plex. By the same token, it's gonna be an advantage to everybody that lives around it.
A buddy linear park. A buddy linear park is...
And it's right next to the park, too.
You'd be overlooking it.
Since it's so close to the park.
And these ones already are zoned.
I mean, the park would be a huge attraction to...
Oh, yeah.
Those are on everybody's...
South side of the park?
Yeah, so you have the park right here. This section right here would be rezoned, and this section right here is currently R2, so it's all duplexes. So it's just kind of following the R2 into an R4, a buddy linear park, so it's kind of the netting.
Would this take into consideration the houses over South Oak Street Elementary in that area?
Completely at the discretion of the governing body, how far we wanna rezone this section. It's, I mean, the big reason, too, for rezoning a portion of Old Goddard is you notice that these are actually in a grid pattern, where most of it's curvilinear. The reason this is more in a grid pattern is it was developed in the earlier part of the 1900s, whereas this was developed later. This makes this area more walkable, so the more density you have in a walkable area, the more beneficial it is for the individuals to live there, because they can walk to certain areas without having to use cars, but at the same time, they're also able to access Main Street. And then they can walk from Main Street along Second or Third into the Starbond area. So, it puts them in close proximity, a lot of potential customers and business users into that area of the Main Street to promote more value for snow cone, blingin' things, iron nutrition, and all the rest of the businesses that we have on Main Street. But also puts them in close walk-in proximity to the Starbond, and then finally, in very close walk-in proximity, obviously, to Main Street when we have National Night Out and Fall Fest.
Well, I think if you do that, the park itself that's there will be a main attraction for people to wanna build multifamily, because you're two blocks away from a nice park.
And the pool.
And the pool.
The pool.
Yep.
It's very common for cities to have a higher density closer to their central business district. It peaks, and then it sort of spreads out. That's why you'll see skyscrapers closer to the central business district of any major city. Higher density, and it slowly pitters out, low density on the outskirts.
I mean, there's gonna be some blowback from the residents that have a single family, but I mean, eventually, something's gonna have to happen to those lots.
Yeah, we're dealing with quite a bit of blighted properties in Old Goddard, and hoping to turn them over to the private sector by incentivizing them to take over those properties, as opposed to us having to go through condemnation or something else in that regard, so...
I think it's a good idea.
Probably, anything that you condemn is gonna raise feathers around it, because they're gonna say, "Well, heavens, if they tore that house down, mine's next."
It depends on the lot, actually. You'd be surprised at the phone calls I get. Some people are actually in favor of the bulldozer, and they're wondering why we haven't done it yet.
Waiting on a tornado.
They are, they're hoping and praying, so it's just something to take into account.
Okay.
This is kind of what we'd see for urban, rural, urban, and this is obviously not, we can't rezone, things are not in the city limits. I'm just using this as an example of how certain areas could be zoned, rural-urban intent. You get them repaired as they bring into the city limits for that conversion process down the road, bringing services up to them, but having them already in the city limits.
Well, that lot that's just south of Industrial Park there, is there any way that we can incentivize them to make that high-density, since it's right next to the school?
I don't think anybody would wanna be, have it high-density unless they bought it and were willing to develop it, and then they very much want it to be high-density. But we would have to first bring them on board, annex them, or wait for a developer to buy it, and then they would petition us to annex.
Where's that gas line run through?
Gas line runs right through here.
It's back over inside.
Right, it's empty.
Right in here, through our...
It's diagonal, but I mean, there'd be room for, there'd be room for kitty corners and big apartment complexes if they wanted to.
There'd be plenty of room right in here for that, certainly. Something to consider.
Is that in city limits?
No, this is not. Everything that's colored is in the city limits, these are in the city limits, too. It's, I don't have the city limit outline on it, but this is not in the city limit, neither is the city.
Bring, bring back the RUI screen.
Please.
Please. That's all right.
As sir, it's for pleasure, you know?
That's all I wanted to see.
I'm just giving you that, 'cause I can.
Just something for, this is not official, obviously, we're just taking this into account to try to get feedback.
How much in tax dollars would that actually add to us to add these RUI districts?
I mean, we could calculate that, but we don't have that here.
I mean, it, does it, it helps us though, as a city?
Certainly.
Okay, good.
Helps us lock up land that...
You could think about this would be, that's right, basically. We'd be locking up land in advance, we wouldn't have to put any infrastructure down, and we'd be generating revenue almost immediately.
And that's what the great...
Great.
You guys feel willing, Mr. Chair, Mr. Mayor, to continue?
Absolutely.
This is the last item of the night.
Okay. We're at the last...
Pack of yards.
Ready? We shall proceed, this is obviously annexation. So, as the city grows, there's an opportunity to annex land that is abiding in the city limits of Goddard. Land can be either annexed through a unilateral process that comes in certain state stipulations, or through a petition of the property owner. Unilateral annexation takes time and has more legal hurdles to jump over. A petition signed by the property owner only requires the governing body to approve the petition and to sign a resolution. Once signed, it is published in the city newspaper, the property's officially in the city limits thirty days later. This is what happened, basically, that property just north of the Dylan's Warehouse, they petitioned the city to be annexed, the governing body signed the resolution, and they're in thirty days later, and they're already on our tax roll, so that's very advantageous for us. The city's in a unique position in negotiating this annexation with the property owner. An municipality can reduce or waive a portion of the taxes collected to make annexation become more favorable to an individual. Once approved, their property would be rezoned, rural-urban intent, RUI, reducing the amount of city resources necessary to manage the property, water, sewer, code enforcement, et cetera. This process is preferable over the unilateral process. It would require some negotiating with property owners, the individual petition to be drafted and approved by the governing body. So unilateral annexation and even petitions have state stipulations, but unilateral meaning that we're gonna annex you without your consent. It's a very lengthy process that takes a lot of time, especially if there's a rebuttal period, there's time for people to protest, and it requires everyone to be involved, everyone from the fire department, the school district, the planning commission, the governing body, and everyone in between. And it's a long and lengthy process. A petition is very simple, it's in your favor, you agree, you sign the petition, we bring it before the governing body, they sign the resolution, thirty days later, you're in.
But...
Yes.
But with the unilateral, if it's a platted property, you can annex them all sequentially in one fell swoop. If there's thirty properties that are platted, you can set your development, your annexation plan, and then do the annexation, and all thirty are in in one action. If you negotiate with each of those thirty parcels individually, then there's thirty separate negotiations as opposed to like open... That's the flip side. But again, it's the honey vinegar thing, and oftentimes unilateral is undertaken, because folks just don't wanna come in. I mean, previously, when we had done this, back when Justin Gibbons was here, we would meet individually with each property owner and be able to show them what their taxes are now versus what their taxes would be coming into the city. And usually, they're slightly higher when they come into the city, but not that much higher, because the folks that are being annexed are already paying a township tax that when Goddard transitioned from a city of the third class, where everybody in the city was paying, not only the city of Goddard property taxes, they were also paying the township taxes. So they were essentially... So they were essentially paying for a township tax that they received no service. And then when you annex, when we became the city of the second class, everybody that was in Goddard at the time essentially got a tax cut because they were no longer paying the township tax. Now, when we go out and annex, whether it's by petition or unilateral, those folks would no longer be paying the township tax. So they may be paying, you know, fifty cents, if you will, to Goddard and thirty-five to the township, so they're actually only having a net of fifteen. But oftentimes, that fifteen cents is enough that folks just don't want to come in. And then at that point, which I think Micah will get to a map that shows you why we're discussing this right now.
Yes.
Which is, in my thirteen years here, we had had a gentleman's agreement with Wichita that we would never cross 167th, and they would cross 167th. Well, as you know, they have a large residential development right across the street from 167th now. And as such, with their latest growth footprint, they're showing their growth corridor going essentially across 167th and down Central. In, in essence, cutting us off. So that, that's where a discussion would need to be had regarding folks that are in platted or unplatted properties because it's a, it's a hodgepodge to the north as to whether or not it's worth annexing. The problem is, as Micah touched on earlier, north of Maple is rural water territory. So it, it gets back into that discussion of, of the Ouroboros and the snake eating its tail as far as. But what we'll do is, is actually run the cost benefit on each parcel as to, okay, if we bring in these thirty homes, what's that going to generate in property taxes versus what's going to be the cost of services? And the reason we've never looked to annex north of this was, you know, I ran the numbers about ten years ago, and we knew it did not make fiscal sense for us to go north of Central. But that was also before we had the fierce urgency of now in that Wichita is saying that they will eventually go around us. And just so that you know, you know, we searched, Micah and I, the MAPD, the Planning Department, and, and the Planning Commissions, the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission's agendas, and Talysin, if you were to look at that, they showed it as being at 151st and Maple as the intersection. They, they, you know, so, so they were, you know, obfuscating the exact, the, the threat, if you will, to the extent of the growth that they.
Does it go that far east?
No.
No, no, it's, it's, it's on, it's on the western half of that half section.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's halfway, it, it's closer to 167th than it is to 151st by a half a mile or a quarter of a mile, actually.
And address just sounds better.
Correct. Well, again, it gets back to, it's less threatening. So anyway, all of that to say, that's a big chunk of why we're talking about this and.
You'll see the map.
And historically, we've, with, with landowners, done the negotiated petition that, that Mike is talking about, and then with platted parcels, we just, we've unilaterally annexed them, but we've taken the honey approach of meeting with each individual one repetitive times to talk to them, to explain why some of them are really grateful and some of them aren't. But it's problematic because we have to have services, we have to deliver those services. And then, as we were talking about earlier, the cost of delivery and the impact of the cost. Just because you know you have the capacity, is it, is it worthwhile? And so these are things that, that we're always running in the background. And when Micah shows you his maps, i- it's really telling as far as, as what's out there and why Wichita would want to do it. Because I was at Wichita when we would go out and just grab half-mile sections of land in one fell swoop. And not have the one-on-one meetings and not have, and I don't anticipate that they would do the same as, as we would, and that they would, would continue in those approaches. I'm sorry, Micah.
No, you're fine. No, that's a good point, though. There's pros and cons to unilateral versus petitions and how we would want to approach each one, but. Side petition is preferable, unilateral, obviously, and we were advised by our lawyers that, you know, it's difficult once you have an angry individual who's now in the city limits, how it can cause disruption, and so we want to try to be honey over vinegar, as Brian put it. Required a governing body, let the city planner be myself and Brian, city staff, act on behalf of the city, reduce the amount of taxes typically collected. It makes them more favorable for the property owner if we're telling them, well, you know, whatever you're paying now, you're only going to be paying seventy-five percent of it in the future. You know, all of a sudden, that sounds a little bit more beneficial. And if we have that zoning classification to go with it, it's basically a win-win for the city and for the property owner, if they feel so inclined. And then at which point we want to consider how many properties you want to, unilateral versus petition. Once a petition has been approved by the property owner, the city would present it to the governing body for consideration. So anytime there's a negotiation that's happening on behalf of the city with a property owner, it has to be approved by the governing body. There's no petition that can just be approved unilaterally by myself or Brian in-house. It has to be brought before the governing body for final approval. So if we were to offer somebody a reduction in tax collection, that would have to be approved by the governing body. If we were going to petition someone to be annexed in-house, it has to be approved by the governing body. Any type of stipulation or benefits has to be approved by the governing body, we can't just do it in-house, and so.
But what's with unilateral, where you have to supply services, we're going to serve a period of time.
You do have to present an action plan, yeah, you do have to present an action plan. Petitions don't require an action plan. If you wanted to keep a water well in your lagoon, you could sign a petition with the city to just be brought on board, no action plan is required. But the problem that you run into there also is that the state requires, and I think it's the county, but also the state requires you to have a, a water well and a lagoon inspection before you sell your property. If it's not to code, it has to be brought up to code. We've had the individuals reach out to the city to annex them almost immediately when they find out that they have to bring their lagoons up to code and cost fifteen thousand dollars. So there's just things to think about when we start.
Run that by again, if.
If you want to.
If you were annexed.
Yes.
And you wanted to sell, then it would be up to the city of Goddard whether you had to bring your lagoon and, and water well up to standard.
Yes.
Or it would be up to the county.
The county, if you're in the county, the county requires it. But we don't require water well inspections or lagoon inspections to sell our property.
Well, you're right, that's worth ten to fifteen thousand dollars.
So, something to consider.
So you'd have to replace it before you do it.
Just things to think about.
No one, no one wants to buy your lagoon.
I'm, I'm not even going to go there.
So this is current city limits, this is Wichita's current city limits. The dark area is county, and our blue area over here would be what we were considering or desired, and we're working, this is a moving forward for 2035 and into the future. Obviously, we can go further than 13th or 21st, and, but also, we have to consider it on plan as well. All the green dots are all the property limits, are the properties that have addresses that are outside of city limits, and there's about five hundred and forty-four of them. And you can tell that where the clusters are, where you have Leo Circle and other properties like that, where there's a clustering of residential where it was platted. And you can kind of see the individual dots for smaller properties off the side. Well, the reason this is so telling, why Brian brought it up, and it's very pivotal, is this is our Goddard desired growth for 2035. This is Wichita's desired growth for 2035.
And point out how we negotiated that brown area there.
So once again, dark is, is county, this is current Wichita, this is where Wichita thinks they're going to be in 2035, and notice they chop and pass over on that part.
And, yeah, that little L shape or inverse P was originally in their growth area until.
So this is kind of caused some consternation among city staff considering that this is what we're looking at, and this is what Wichita is looking at. And you see how they smash along 167th and then just jump over really dramatically as they move forward, so. And as you probably know, this property right here is up for sale. That's going to be very telling.
And, and, you know, development to the north is problematic because of the Dry Creek Basin, the drainage basin and the floodplain and all of that. But it, it, it can be worked around. But it's something that, that we know it makes sense for us to engage. It is complicated because of, as, as Micah brought up, like Leo Court. Prior to my time on the council, and it may even been, Larry, before you ran again, they had initially, Leo Court and North and South had wanted to be in the city. And they were denied access. So that, there's a reason, too, that rural water essentially down 183rd ran water line service to that area that then, of course, the city, in essence, abdicated that, that ground. And so like when you have Arbor Creek or you have, you know, anything there along 183rd now, it's, it's a negotiation. So where I'm going with this is, is you have certain pockets where folks maybe have wanted to be in that we had turned away for whatever reason, and now we're going to go out to them and say, hey, guess what, we want you now. And then they had to spend that capital cost for rural water to get those lines and such. So there's some of this, too, that we'll have to deal with. That negotiations, even though they may be platted, may be in our best interest, or we're going to have to come out and say, you know what, we're just, we're going to, to make it right, we're going to have to, to maybe go a little above and beyond in certain areas that we didn't otherwise or wouldn't otherwise do.
But it's a pay-to-play thing. You have to have it in order to have more growth, you know, so you might have to take on that burden upfront.
And then, and then we get into, okay, well, what are we annexing? What's it generate? What's the service provisions to that going to cost? Where is that in relation to our debt limit that we were talking about? So it's, 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 it's an orchestrated waltz that, that we have to do as we look at this because that's why we never really pursued it, because it just didn't make economic sense for us to go north of, of Central. Well, now we kind of have to at least be thinking about it because we know we run the risk of being in and around within the next ten to twenty years. And is that something that we want? Because Wichita's not going to care. They're going to just unilaterally annex because it makes sense, and they do that. Actually, it doesn't make sense because they don't think about it the way that we do. But, you know, we look at cost of services and we know, okay, well, we want an, we want a standard response time APD of being three minutes. And if we've got X number of officers and we want a three-minute response time, and now all of a sudden, we've, we've increased our land area by six square miles, we know that's not feasible. So then, how many more officers is that going to be? Okay, how many more public works folks? Because now we have open ditch, open ditch drainage, and we have urban rural interface. And so how many more public works people are we going to have? But we can't finance them through water utilities, which is, you know, a third of our costs for a lot of our public works employees, or sewer costs. Maybe we could do that, but then you get into the lift station costs, and we know each lift station cost is three million dollars, and right now, we can only really finance two to three of those. Right now. So it, it's a sticky wicket. Sorry for, but this is everything that we talk about, so when it looks like we're, we're, we, we go in fits and spurts, that's why. Because it's like, I don't know that folks realize that, oh, yeah, we would love to build a park, and I would love to put in seven hundred thousand dollars with a brand spanking new equipment because it, it truly almost brings me to tears to say that my son grew up ten-plus years and not ever being able to play on park equipment in Goddard. You know, it, 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 it just boggles my mind. So it's like, yes, I identified that, but, you know, how do we pay for it and not blow up the bank in the process? Or tie the hands of folks, you know, twenty years from now? Sorry, I don't need to be a Debbie Downer.
Things to think about.
But is, all, all of that to say, it's not as cut and dry as we often like to.
So, so how long would we be underwater financially to make that stuff happen?
We would have to, if, if this is something that you are interested in us pursuing, then at that point, we go into a detailed parcel analysis. So of the five hundred and thirty-eight homes, we're going to know exactly what each one's going to generate, what each one's additional cost would be, which ones are in which territory, where does that lay, how is the additional service requirements, what's that going to cost? Because we know that it's not as simple as saying, oh, we just add three officers, that's one per shift. You know, you got supervisor ratios, and you've got vehicle costs and staffing costs, and all of these things that we know that, that we've got to do, and. So we, we will have that answer for you, but we don't have.
Westwood Shaw.
Yep.
What was that?
Said if we don't do this, we're going to be the East Borough of Westwood Shaw.
Yeah.
They'll go right around us.
What's the Western option?
Western option is pretty open. There is no rural water.
And no rural.
Which are named? Westboro.
It is discouraging, but it's not completely against the city, because if we could, if we went west, we could.
We could, yeah. The rural water district basically wraps us around here.
Yep.
Comes down this way and then starts to wrap us on this side, so we could go this way.
The farther north and south we can push, the more we can cut them off.
Which is true, but. And, and they can be in the city and still be rural water customers.
Yes.
Okay.
They can?
Yes.
So we don't have to provide them with the.
No, but we have to, we have to provide a benefit to them and show that there's a benefit to them.
Like PD.
Please.
Or sewer, or, yeah.
Yes.
The reason PD is not the best option is because they already, the county just reaches out to our police department all the time to assist them. And so they're already getting city services from the police department.
Yeah, we, we often, anywhere from ten to thirty percent of our calls are extraterritorial assistance.
So we.
Yeah, so it makes sense from that aspect to annex them.
Yes.
And then, so. Would the heavier density areas still be RUIs?
It's a good question.
Most likely because that's what they are right now, and so to make it.
Okay.
To make it, I mean, I'm practicing the golden rule.
Sure, for simplicity as well.
And, and so they, they can continue to do what they're doing without, it wouldn't, it wouldn't be an impediment on their lifestyle.
What's the probability that if we were to annex that, that they would want to be on our city water and sewer?
Definitely sewer, because I, I've talked to individuals that I do, you know, know outside of work.
Sewer's a lot of the big cost.
And sewer's a lot of the big cost.
Yep.
But sewer's a lot of the big cost.
Yeah.
And again, getting into, like I was saying, with our, 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 our debt limit and what's included and what's excluded, those utilities are not, and if they're not on GO bonds, then that takes some.
Okay.
Gives us a little breathing room.
So it's doable?
It is doable.
Okay.
We can work it, but like I was saying, it's, it's important that we know where we want to jump, when we're going to jump, and how we're going to jump.
Yeah. And what's a realistic timeline of that being accomplished if we wanted to move on that?
Oh, I mean. I would defer to Micah as far as pulling together.
Cost benefit.
When they found out we, we had annexed that, is the probability that somebody will want to jump on that for development as soon as they find out we got it?
Yes.
Want to force us to develop the infrastructure?
Yes.
I don't see anybody else wanting to do another development in. Once this one goes in by, by Quick, or Quick Shop, that's three new developments plus Hellcrash.
Yeah, there's, there's a lot of different options that we could explore. In terms of a cost-benefit analysis, we could run a pretty simple algorithm that runs through GIS and pulls the data. It has a comparable matrix to make that determination, but.
Is that going to give you a systematic plan instead of just simply overall cost analysis?
Overall cost analysis, which we can segment by geographic location, so we could segment it.
Okay, so I mean, so basically. Okay, so I mean, so basically you're going to determine which direction, whether we went north or south or west would be the most beneficial to start with.
We could segment it and make that determination based on the numbers. But also, we can also segment it depending on plating to make that determination as well. We do currently have a lift station over here. So if we, there is the possibility for servicing this area, so there's southwest and north corridor area, so we could consider that as well. It kind of just depends on what people want. Some people just want to be left alone, and if they're going to get a tax break and be left alone, that's going to be beneficial, so they would go with RUI. But some people, like Brian mentioned, might want sewer services. And it's going to require engineering review, and it can be costly, so. And if we impact Rural Water, of course, they're going to, they're going to call us, so. They have a right to by state law.
But if you're going north to 13th, why not go to 21st?
That's fair, fair question. We could go.
That was initially way back when we had contemplated. And we called it kind of Operation Theodosius, which was the emperor that built the wall around Constantinople to keep everyone out. And essentially, ideally 31st to 21st. But again, that's, you know, a pencil neck in a chair, drawing a line on a map going, yeah, that'd be cool.
There really is no, at this point, it's just receive and file. I mean, it's simply, if you guys think we should be more aggressive in our annexation procedure, we can indicate that.
The only good thing I can say about going north is, is the aquifers up north. And if they run out of water, that's where the aquifer is. The aquifer ends down just on the, a little ways past our wells, it starts getting less and less and less. And so the water that we would need for more wells would be north.
And we're working on some preliminary items on that right now. And so we may be coming to the council here in the next 60 days with a request for some analysis.
Where's Boffman on the study with the one that we approved, those three different?
They're working on it, was in contact last week with him regarding that. And it's Mr. Wooton is the primary contact. Because that's essential. Because that also tells us where do we need on that map? The lift stations and requirements for that. Because we know that we have developments that are interested in additional development and large-scale decent. So that's why we're trying to figure this all out and do so in a manner that doesn't, that's fiscally prudent and wise long-term, so that we're not penny wise pound food. But not tying the hand, again, it's, the west stuff is valuable to us, and that's what we're actually going to fight over with the city of Wichita. Because that's the stuff that's going to sell and that's going to have a lot of volumes of homes. We can start annexing a lot of ground, but what we want is homes. We want volume, we want density. And so even though, yeah, we could go west, but getting a developer to actually go over there compared to Pawnee and 167th area, that's where we want to be.
And especially after there's two more stoplights on the catalog.
Right. Yeah, so.
Well, the other, the other look at that, though, is two more stoplights don't make the west. I mean, you have to stop anyway.
Sure, but to get through Goddard, to get into Wichita for a job, it makes it less desirable.
Wichita will connect into Goddard, but where at? You know, the Pawnee line connecting the Goddard School Districts into the city of Goddard, that's where we're going to, that's the battleground area almost. And where, who's going to get the property taxes on that? And so that's what one of the study that Boffman's figuring out. Is what is it going to cost for us to get to that boundary line and see the feasibility of everything?
Do you have a recommendation if we should be pursuing annexations with individuals? Or do you see, what is your recommendation?
I would wait till we see the results of that study from Boffman. That's my opinion.
You want to hold off on annexations till the new year, or do you have any particular opinion on that?
I don't think it hurts to ask questions.
Say it again.
I don't think it hurts to ask questions either. I mean, you don't have to pursue them, but.
So how far off is that study from Mark? Any idea?
I would imagine within the next 60 days.
Okay. So how many individual conversations are we talking about if we went through this, like semi-annexation plane like that?
We would meet with each person that wanted to meet with us. And we would have open houses, but we would prefer to meet individually because.
We can negotiate.
Well, not just, it's not so much a negotiation, it's just a relationship. And then we understand where they're coming from, they understand where we're coming from, and we're able to lay it out and speak to, hey, this is what's happening and why. And then where you have the large tracts of agricultural land, as we've done in the past, that's where, as Mike is saying, that's where we really kind of start negotiating. Because that's where you're going to get the big buffers.
State law prohibits unilateral annexation of 21 agricultural acres or more. So you would have to petition anybody over 21 agricultural acres.
Okay, so I got a question.
Yes.
Like the dirt roads, gravel roads, this and that, you know, when they're annexed in the city, we take care of those roads there?
Yep.
Okay, good, because I've had a lot of people tell me about how Sedgwick County doesn't take care of the roads.
Well, it's township, yeah. There's township taxes. And that's something that, yeah, we can do with a sand seal. I mean, there are different levels that we can build on from there.
Now, the engineers don't want to go all in, I'll just warn you right now. But I think it's more of a pragmatic and fiscally prudent thing right now where.
It's definitely beneficial for them to be.
Right, I mean, they'll have at least better roads.
Right, but we have to be smart about our annexation, but we can't just go crazy in that.
My first opinion is start talking to them. Get the idea of who would be in and who would be out.
I'm sorry.
Nothing says we have to do it right now, but at least start the conversation.
There's nothing wrong with.
Yeah, I just, I mean, maybe it's our lucky day and they all want to come in and just be RUIs and they don't want sewer or water. I mean, I know that's not likely. Check it out.
Yes.
There's nothing wrong with testing waters.
Mike ain't got anything to do anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah.
We got to do something.
At least not between my PA and midnight.
So what's the likelihood that they would prefer to be Goddard residents and Wichita residents?
It just depends on what they consider beneficial.
Well, we have a lower, we have a lower tax rate.
Well, some of them. School system.
Some of them would get, if we, apples to apples, we did some comparison on some of the properties and some of them would be paying more. But if we negotiated a lower tax, we could do that as well.
And then it's, you dial 911, who's going to show up and tell the type of services?
Yeah, people in Wichita or in Goddard School District.
And north of Central is Renwick, but the services provided, yeah.
Yeah, services.
North of Central is what?
Renwick, you're going to Andale.
It's sort of a quid pro quo situation.
That's right, yeah. Anything north of Central is Andale, right?
We could offer people to keep their existing services under an RUI, reduce the taxes that we are offering to collect from them, and they would be better off. Because they'd be paying less and we would be benefiting, because currently we're not benefiting off them at all. Some benefits better than none, but they would be paying less in their escrow or they would be paying less in their annual property taxes. While being under a lower zoning classification, that would allow them to continue their lifestyle as is and not having to pay for code compliance with bringing their lagoons and septic and water wells up to the, at the same time.
And in both situations, we're still servicing with our PD?
That's right, and either way, PD is going to be servicing with them anyway. And another factor that's benefits us is our compensating use tax. The state has a compensating use tax that's a point of origin. If you buy something online and you're in the city limits of Goddard, that taxes that's collected online by Amazon goes back to the city.
Really?
Yes, which has increased about 200% over last year.
Yeah.
The more properties are buying online, which happens to be the majority of them nowadays, if they're in the city limits, we collect their compensating use tax. So it's another kind of a quid pro quo. We benefit in other ways as well. Something to consider.
I'd say we should take a shot at it if it makes sense.
We stopped him.
We just have to be gentle, I suppose, and open about it, but we will open that up.
It's a lot easier. It's a different conversation if you're just inquiring as opposed to if we were really sitting down and we really want to do this as more of a feel her out type thing.
Right, we can reach out and speak about potential for it. Are you satisfied at age seven? Staff report is none. At this point, it's be the head of J. Commissioner comments? We open it up?
No. I just want to thank you all for coming. I know it wasn't your week to be here. So this was very educational, so thank you.
I feel like it was very productive, too. Gets to know everybody's feeling about things.
I'm good.
So am I, and I also appreciate you guys coming in. Of course, you're welcome at any of our meetings.
Man, you guys got muffins.
You want to make it three times a month.
But question I had was the property with the motorhome storage, was that ever resolved?
It's still in the protest period, I believe, off of Maple.
Okay.
But I'd have to double check that since it's outside of our jurisdiction.
Well.
I can check.
The protest was the outfit that had 40 some acres right next door, was that?
What about it?
Were they the ones that filed the protest?
Oh, certainly were, absolutely. They are very adamant to not have that there, you know. They may have the majority of the land, so they could have that protest period force a supermajority of the Board of County Commissioners.
Okay.
I can follow up if you like.
Well, just curious result.
I can follow up.
Never that was our surprise.
By the way, mad people.
Anything else?
No.
At this point, then, we're going to ask for Mr. Mayor to close the special session.
Okay. I asked nobody to close, adjourn the city, the special city council. What Brian said.
Motion and a second.
All right, motion?
Motion.
Second? Second by, motion by Michael, second by Brent, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Special session closed. Then we would move on to Planning Commission. Mr. Chair, at which point you would also look for a motion and a second to close the Planning Commission.
Do I have to ask?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
Oh, second.
All favor.
Aye.